No problem. Welcome. Call the meeting to order. We have roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry, absent. Alderman Spaghetti.
Here.
Alderman Tolanair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Shep.
Here.
Mayor Tombs.
Here.
Fledge allegiance?
Why the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Invocation by Alderman Shep.
If everyone could please remain standing. As we gather here tonight in this chamber to conduct the business of the people of Rock Island, I just want to continue to ask that all of us do our part as good neighbors to keep our other neighbors safe and that if we see something, we say something and not hesitate to call the brave men and women of our police and fire forces, as they will be out there, and they're happy to help keep us safe. And may we continue to have a safe spring and summer and make good things happen for this city. Amen.
Item five. Minutes of the meeting for May 8th, 2017.
Move to approve the minutes is printed?
Second.
Any motion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number six. Minutes of the executive session for May 8th, 2017.
Move to approve the executive session minutes?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Update Rock Island. That's me. Spring into summer, 5K. On Saturday, May 20th, 2017, at 9:00 AM, the Spring Forward Learning Center and Martin Luther King Center, King Junior Community Center and the Rock Island Library are partnering to put on a 5K run which will fight the summer fight the summer slide and bring learning to more than 500 children as Spring Forward enrichment camps. Race day registration will be at 7:30 AM to 8:45 at Sunset Park, the main shelter, and the race begins at 9:00. Please enter the 31st Avenue entrance to the park. Chip timing for all participants, tee shirts and fun quarter mile run for kids 12 and under could have some fun. So, once again, come enjoy it and raise a little money for a good cause. Citizen of the Year. Do you know anyone who deserves to be recognized for what they do for the community? So, if so, this is an opportunity to nominate them for this 2017 Citizen of the Year Awards, sponsored by the Mayor and City Council. There are seven categories for Rock Island citizens. Business, professional, education, individual, city employee, and organizations and youth. There is a special category for someone who does not live in Rock Island but has contributed to the good of the community. This person or organization is not eligible for the overall Citizen of the Year Award but may be nominated as an honorary Citizen of the Year. To learn more and nominate someone, you can go to www.rigov.org/COI. The deadline for receiving these nominations is June 9th. If you have any questions, please call the committee co-chairs, which is Alderman Dylan Parker and Alderman Dave Geenan or the city clerk Judith. Augustana Music Festival Concert. The Augustana Symphony Orchestra, Augustanic Symphonic Band and the Augustana Choir will perform a grand festival concert in Dr. Daniel Culver's final appearance on the Centennial Hall Stage. The concert is free and will be held May 20th and starts at 7:00 PM. Cardinals Dodgers bus trip. Baseball fans are sure to have a good time at this Cardinals Dodgers game on Monday, May 29th, 2017, at Busch Stadium in St. Louis. The Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department sponsored the trip will leave at 7:00 AM for a 1:15 game time. The cost is $95, which concludes a seat on a deluxe motor coach and a third base line ticket to the game. You can register online at www.rigov.org or you can call 309-732-7275 or stop by the Ryffack Park Office at 4303 24th Street in Rock Island. Thank you. That's that. And then number eight. We have a presentation to the Rock Island Historic Preservation Awards. So, sir, if you'd like to come forward and to read this. Oh, they're gonna do the words first, okay.
Hello, my name is Marty Bush and I am the President of the Rock Island Preservation Society. I would like to thank the council, Mayor Tombs, for allowing us to present our Historic Preservation Awards in celebration of Historic Preservation Month. The purpose of the Historic Preservation Awards is to recognize and commend those individuals in groups who have worked to preserve and restore historic structures in our community or whose actions have served to support the historic qualities of Rock Island. Our awards are given primarily for exterior improvements that were completed in the previous year, 2016 in this case. This year, we are presenting one certificate of recognition, six Historic Preservation Awards, and one special award. Recipients, as you are announced, would you please come forward to receive your award and then remain in the front to, we will have a group picture at the end of the presentations. So with that, we will begin with the certificate of recognition. It goes to Josh and Dr. Annie Rinn for the restoration of their porch of the 1914 Bungalow home located at 740 22nd Street. This restoration was a do it yourself project that involved reinforcing the structure, removing and reusing the shingles and replacing the beadboard ceiling with material salvaged from a local garage that was being demolished. Okay, moving on then to the preservation awards. The first Historic Preservation Award goes to the Carpollez Manuscript Museum at 722nd Street. Receiving the award is the Director of the Museum, John Snow. This recognition is for the reconstruction and replacement of the dome of the former church that was destroyed in an April 2012 windstorm. A new dome was installed in 2016 that recreates the original silhouette of the building and allows light to enter through skylights to illuminate the stained glass of the inner dome. Okay, the second Historic Preservation Award goes to Eric Mathis for the work done on his house at 1320 20th Street. Years of effort were involved in removing the peeling paint down to the bare wood, replacing rotted boards, and then repainting the clapboard. Several windows were rebuilt as part of the project, including unique pocket windows on the sun porch. All of this work was done by Eric himself. Eric was going to join us but it looks like he might be joining us later. The third Historic Preservation Award goes to Dennis Inalas Harker for the work done on their house located at 847 21st Street. Located on a prominent corner of 9th Avenue, this home was covered with pink and gray shingles for decades. Over a period of a few years, Dennis removed those shingles to reveal the original 1890s clapboard and then he repainted as he progressed. The home is now completely unveiled and restored in an amazing transformation. The fourth Historic Preservation Award goes to John Brown for the work done on his house located at 736 17th Street. Major repair, restoration, and landscaping have transformed this historic home into a beautiful addition to its Broadway historic neighborhood. Removal of overgrowth and excessive shrubbery once again makes it visible. The next Historic Preservation Award goes to the Automotive Expert Garage at 547 20th Street. The award recipient is John Gattila and Tasha Thomas, his manager. This building, originally a gas station, was vacant and appeared abandoned for many years. When Mr. Gattila took it over, he immediately began cleaning, repairing, and beautification. He maintained most of the structure, including the unusual stair step gable. A new roof, doors, and painting have adapted the building to his business needs. Weeds and broken concrete are gone and there's even a comfortable outdoor waiting area. Okay, the last Historic Preservation Award goes to the developers of the Star Block, which is located between 1821 and 29 2nd Avenue. The award recipient is Eric Reader, who is the Executive Director of the Downtown Rock Island Partnership. The 1876 Star Block is actually three buildings with five storefronts and was once owned by three separate entities. As a result, coordination of exterior improvements and even maintenance was difficult. The Rock Island Economic Growth Corporation purchased all three buildings and developed a plan to restore the exteriors and adaptably reuse the interiors for housing. This award recognizes the work that was completed to the exterior, including restoration of the historic storefronts. RIPS occasionally acknowledges projects, people, or organizations that have contributed to preservation of our city's history. This year, a special award recognizes the group that emerged from the efforts to save the Hauberg Civic Center as a publicly owned building. The award goes to the Friends of Hauberg Civic Center Foundation. Accepting the award tonight is President Deb Kuntzey. We'd also like to recognize the board members of the foundation. If you're here, you are also welcome to come forward for the photo. Jeans Wifel. Jason Kuntz. Toddlin Scott. Alan Carmen. Cynthia Burke. David Cordis. Steve Scott. Tyler Panel. Her Penel. And Diane Elstrange. Quite a group. The Friends of Hauberg was organized in 2016 and has worked with the city and the Parks Department to promote and maintain the Dinkman Hauberg Estate. A 501(c)(3) designation was approved in May 2016 and the organization began to solicit donations and grants. Major renovation, restoration, and maintenance of the buildings and landscape have been accomplished over the past year. Well, that concludes our award presentation. After this and we take the photo, we'd like to ask the recipients to exit the chamber and we will have reception downstairs. And Mayor Tombs, any of the city council, and anyone else who would like to join our reception afterwards, you're welcome to join us downstairs in the lobby afterwards. Thank you.
Quick, before we take the photo here, what we do, I'd like to know that there's a proclamation for the Preservation Month. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for the communities across the nation, both urban and rural, for all Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives as the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people and, whereas, see, save, and celebrate is the theme for the National Preservation Month 2017, and whereas the City of the Rock Island Preservation Commission and the Rock Island Preservation Society cosponsor Preservation Month in the city of Rock Island. Now, therefore, I, Mike Tombs, Mayor of City of Rock Island, proclaim May 17th, May 2017, as Preservation Month. Thank you.
Could I add something?
That?
I would just like to say that I am a proud member of the Rock Island Preservation Society, have been for a few years now, and I encourage everybody up here to join rockislandpreservation.org. Everybody out home, watching this at home, it's a wonderful group. They do wonderful, necessary work here in the city and I'm just proud of all of the recipients of the awards tonight and look forward to many years of preserving Rock Island's history. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Larry, I believe you're gonna accept this next one. We have National Public Works Weeks. Works Week, easy for me to say. Whereas, public work service provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Mike Tombs, Mayor of City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Mayor Tombs and City Council. I think we're truly blessed to have the public work staff that we do have. I think through their dedication, pride, perseverance, I think the city is well-served and the citizens have been served for generations. We may experience a few bumps on the road, no pun intended. You know, I think our staff is second to none, so thank you guys for this, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. And thank you to all the members of Public Works here in the city of Rock Island for the nights that they come in for busted water mains and holidays and overtime on the weekend during the winter and all year round, always something going on with a city this size, this age, so thank you.
Very good, thank you, it is great. Item number 11.
Claims for the week of May 5th through May 11th in the amount of $666,181.81 in payroll for the weeks of April 24th through May 7th, 2017, in the amount of $1,476,976.
Move to allow the claims and payroll?
Second.
Moved to second, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolanair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Thank you, item number 12.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the emergency purchase of a rebuilt Cummins ISL long block from MJ Diesel Engine Specialists Incorporated of Yakima, Washington in the amount of $13,899.50.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended?
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
I appreciate Public Works' attempt to work with local shops. I know they reached out to Cummins here in Rock Island and it was a matter of turnaround, unfortunately, so, but thanks, you know. It's good to shop local.
Very good. Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolanair.
Yes.
Parker. Shep.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 13.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the purchase of valve box parts recommending the bid be awarded to Zimmer &amp; Francesca Inc. of Moline, Illinois in the amount of $10,844.30.
Motion to award the bid as recommended and approve the purchase?
Second.
Moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolanair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 15.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the 41st Avenue Court and 45th Street Court Reconstruction Project recommending the low bid of Donald R. Beeler Family Limited Partnership LP of Moline, Illinois be rejected due to nonresponsiveness and the bid be awarded to Walter D. Lawd Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois in the amount of
Move to reject the low bid and award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolanair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 15.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the sale of city-owned property at the northwest corner of Illinois 92 and Andalusia Road for the development of a Casey's General Store mini truck stop at the site.
Move to approve the sale of the property as recommended and direct CED staff to complete negotiations with the applicant and prepare a purchase agreement for future city council action.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
Chandler, would you be so kind, could we have Chandler come up here for just a brief overview? I really just want to celebrate you and your department on this one, because this is definitely a big win for the city. I think Casey's is a great establishment, it's gonna be awesome to have a presence for them in this city. I think it's the right location for them, I think it's the perfect location for what they're looking for, but if you could tell us a little bit about how this came to be and...
The corner is a fantastic corner and I think we're very fortunate the city controls it, which allowed us the opportunity to go out and actively seek some potential buyers for the site. We realized that because of control intersection, large enough size, the exposure, the underserved population, whether it be the industrial park, but also the residents going north and southeast and west at that point, it was an ideal location for a C store. But we also asked them to work on a corporate fueling station as well because of all the businesses that are out there. We wanted to make sure that they were served as well. And Casey's rose the challenge and they came up and said this is what we'd like to do and we agree with your vision and away we went.
Awesome, great.
That's great.
Thank you.
One quick question, I was talking with Randy about this earlier. Is that lot triangular in shape?
It's a very irregular shape. As you can see, it has this long flag that goes, you know, quite a long ways to the north and most of that site is undevelopable because it is underwater pretty much or it's very, very prone to flooding. They will be building on the actual corner, if you will, and working on the access points off of 92 and Andalusia Road would be something we'll start working with them on now.
I have some curiosities about the shape of the lot, but I'll ask you that some other time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Tolanair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 16.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for installation of a handicap parking space on 6th Street for the home at 523 14th Avenue.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance?
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. 17.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request to replace the yield signs with stop signs at the intersection of 40th Street and 26th Avenue.
Motion to approve the request? Yeah, to approve the request as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussions?
I do believe we have some residents from that neighborhood who would like to speak on this behalf.
Sure.
Dave, real quick, Mr. Morrison, could we clarify that we've made the right motion here in the affirmative, because I believe the recommendation is deny the request. And so I think what Alderman Geenan wants to do is to amend that and basically... Allow those yield signs to be turned into stop signs. To not accept the staff recommendation into me.
Yeah, I think then that what would be appropriate is if you were to withdraw your previous motion and then restate it as a motion to deny the request from staff and to allow the stop signs.
I'll remove my second.
I withdraw my motion respectively.
I think we had a double negative problem there, is that correct?
Yeah, sorry, I'm new to this.
No, no, I didn't know what was wrong with what he said.
I think that what Alderman...
Recommendation from the staff is to deny this request and my motion is to overrule that decision.
And you said approve the request.
And you said to approve the request.
Approve the request as recommended.
But that's not as recommended, the recommendation is...
Thank you, Josh.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, and he withdrew a second. So, let's start again, do you want to make a new motion, please?
Someone else could make a motion to deny the staff's recommendation and approve the applicant's request. I make a motion to deny the staff's recommendation as presented and approve the applicant's request to turn that yield sign on, to remove that yield sign into a stop sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, is there any discussion on this? Now, if you wish to make a comment, if you could put your name and address on there, please?
Or just state.
Or state and state it, please.
My name is Travis...
If you could move the microphone right front, please.
My name is Travis Spreet, I live at 2609 40th Street with, it's me, myself, my wife, I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old. With me, I also brought the voices of 18 other people in the neighborhood that agree with our request to change that yield sign to a stop sign. Our ultimate goal is to switch that whole intersection to a four-way stop. We're taking baby steps with getting the yield signs taken out with the stop sign first and then we'll go from there. The city did come out and put traffic counters on the intersection, that was why they said they denied it, not enough traffic. We're not asking permission for our kids to play in the street. We're asking, and obviously I brought some kids with me. I understand the fact that it is a busy road. We found out that if a car drives over 25 miles an hour, which is a normal posted speed limit for a residential area, the chances of an accident go up by three times for a kid to get hit. I'm a 911 dispatcher for the city of Moline and East Moline. I've seen it, I've talked to parents that have witnessed their kids get hit. I do not want that to happen in my neighborhood, I don't want to call the city of Rock Island to report that my son has been hit by a car that was flying down the street and neglected the fact that there is some type of sign notification there to slow down. We have put signs up ourselves, little neon guys that hold flags... We have put signs up ourselves, little neon guys that hold flags that say "Slow Down." They work, but not to where a stop sign would work, and I feel that the best thing to do is take that yield sign out. The yield sign is basically what we found out. The front seat that we have to the intersection, we're right there on the corner. We see it happen every single day. That yield sign is a suggestion to people to stop. It's not a mandatory stop. 95% of the cars feel they don't need to stop or slow down and acknowledge the people coming east on the street, and I would just hate for something bad to happen to one of the kids in the neighborhood, and I think that's going to happen.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? All right.
Question?
Yes, question.
Sir, I'm sorry.
We've got a question for you, sir.
You mentioned there were a number of other neighbors. Did you have, like, a list of people there? Yeah, I have a... Could you share that with us? Just, I mean, can we look at that as we're standing here? And then, I had another question. Oh, I know what it was. It wasn't really a question. The second part of my statement was, I just wanted to acknowledge, we did have one gentleman who emailed us expressing his opposition to the stop signs, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, because I don't think he came to the meeting tonight.
Well, and so, you know, I've talked, in the seventh ward, I've talked with these families here. I've visited their house. I've visited the intersection. I also visited the gentleman who had opposition, and, you know, I understand that usually with these type of requests, the city recommends, recommends a close, recommends one way or the other based on a set of standards, but within those standards of the recommendation, it does not include city engagement. And, you know, this is a yield sign that they're asking to turn into a stop sign. People are slowing down already. We're just asking them to stop. And, you know, the corner of where this house sits is kind of the gathering place of the community, and so I understand both sides, but I'm voicing my opinion to override the city's recommendations. You can do things based on a checklist, or you can do things based on what the community and the neighbors want.
Yeah, and from past experience with this in my own ward, and Randy, you can feel free to speak in on this as well if you'd like, but generally, the recommendation from staff, based on the standards that they use to make the determination, are always, are most of the time insufficient to fit in line with what the organizing group of citizens want to achieve. So, you know, we saw it in the sixth ward where virtually everyone on the street who lived on that street signed the petition, and we, it wasn't changing yield signs into stop signs, but it was adding stop signs, and so to echo your concern, I mean, you know, it's, I just want to clarify, it's not staff that's saying, you know, no, this neighborhood's already safe enough. It's just the codes that they look at from an engineering perspective, and that's where it's the job of the aldermen to look at the citizen engagement and the signatures as a big decision, so... Oh, here they are.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 18.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Joseph Lemon, Rock Valley Office Park, for City Ordinance Section 9-42, control of each of their parking lots at 4703 44th Street, 4705 44th Street, 4709 44th Street, and 4711 44th Street.
Motion to approve the request as recommended and ask the city attorney to approve ordinance, providing ordinance.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item 19.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments to the Beautification Commission.
Motion to...
Go ahead. Motion to approve the reappointments as recommended.
Second.
The movement's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number 20.
Report from the mayor regarding an appointment to the Bay State Regional Commission.
Move to approve the appointment as recommended.
Second.
The movement's second. Any discussions?
Great candidate.
If you say so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 21.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Radical Effect Brew Works for live entertainment outdoors with sound amplification and the consumption of alcohol outdoors on Friday, July 14th, 2017, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at 1340 31st Street.
Move to approve the event and request as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, and subject to being closed down early if noise complaints are received.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanted to voice a concern I have about the hours. I know that sound amplification and people outdoors talking and laughing, it carries quite a ways, and this is going to go on until 11 o'clock at night, so although I'm concerned about it, I'm going to vote in the affirmative, but I want citizens in that neighborhood to know that if it is too loud for them at any time, they can call the, I suppose, the non-emergency police department number, and it should be closed down or quieted down. It says "closed down" here. Subject to closed down, so I just want to make that point.
Good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. 22. Other business.
We kind of touched on it this morning, or not this morning, but earlier this meeting, but the, I do serve on the Citizen of the Year Committee, co-chair with Mr. Geenan here, and we now have an online form. You don't have to print off the form and fill it out and mail it in or something. I don't know. It's old technology, but now we have a link on the city's website for the form to fill out, so from the comfort of your home, you can now nominate a neighbor, a business, employee, whomever that you think have been outstanding citizens for this past year. I encourage you to do so, and I look forward to meeting all of them and getting ourselves some awards.
It's an opportunity for us as citizens to nominate our fellow citizens and to celebrate the gifts that we all bring to Rock Island. Kind of as a collective whole, we all make the city what it is, and the way to do that is to get as many nominations as possible, to make all those on the committees their job even more difficult to choose those candidates to win those awards.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Nothing else? Item number 23.
Executive Session for the Exception. 5 ILCS 120, Section 2, C1. The Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees of the Public Body.
Thank you. Going to executive session?
It says roll call.
Oops, excuse me, roll call.
I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Shep.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays.
All right, very good. Thank you.